Let's come to order. Welcome to our December meeting. Tonight, the pledge will be led by Ben Holliday, son of Aaron Holliday, our very own member.
Pledgeance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us for a moment of silence, and I'd ask that you remember Mr. Blair and his family. Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. For our visitors, we discuss these matters at our work session on Tuesdays before the meeting, so we're not rushing through too badly here. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Number six.
Dr. Burns, before we go there, Mr. Sandvig and I both need to go to budget meeting. If there's anything that you need to... As Dr. Burns said, we went over thoroughly the agenda on Tuesday night, had considerable discussion, it's on TV if you want to refer to that, but at any rate, if no one objects, I'm gonna ask Mr. Sandvig to go now, so he can make sure he gets there by the 5:30 start.
Okay.
Jeff, you're ready to go. Thank you.
So you want to move to number eight right now? Is that what you're saying?
Well, if there are any questions, has anybody got anything on number eight? On those budget amendments?
I misunderstood you, I'm sorry.
I did, I apologize.
Because now you're free to go, Jeff.
Okay. There you go.
Thanks. So we'll come back to that, we'll vote in a second then.
Next, we have Excellence in Education Program Award Presentation. I don't know if Ms. Tracy Porter's gotten here yet. She plays a substantial role in this presentation, so if you guys can just sit tight for a few minutes, I think she'll be... She called in, said she might be a couple minutes late.
Okay, visitors. We've got Mr. Caleb Bratcher. Okay. Caleb, come forward right here if you would. And if you need to bend down the microphone so we can hear you, just step, speak right into there. Welcome.
I'm Caleb Bratcher. I'm in sixth grade and I'm on Team Brainstorm. We are in FLL, which is First League League. It is a worldwide competition that has two parts. One is to design a robot that does certain tasks on a board. The other is to come up with a problem based on this year's theme, research the problem, and come up with a solution. This year's theme is body forward. Every team must study some problem with the human body, and we have chosen obesity, because many other problems are caused by obesity, and obesity is a growing epidemic in the US and many other countries. In our research, we found that obesity, that most obese adults started getting bad habits in childhood. Many people don't know why they're obese, because they were never taught. Schools need effective training in health and nutrition in elementary grades before kids get bad habits in place. The connection has to be made between food and exercise. Even if there was no such thing as unhealthy food, no one knew that everything they ate still has to be burned in some way, and the epidemic of obesity would still be growing, and it is growing. Teaching kids in elementary school now will, in the long run, reduce the number of obese people, because if they are taught the right way now, then their children will be taught the right way by their parents, and by the schools, and then their children, and so on. And now I'm gonna let Chance talk.
Thank you, Caleb. We have come up with a solution that could be implemented now, taking no extra time from teachers. Our solution is to hang health and nutrition billboards like this one in school cafeterias. The message needs to be clear. What you put in your body, calories in, must be matched with how much you exercise, calories out. In schools that have TVs in their lunchrooms, will show video cartoons like Schoolhouse Rock, but on health and nutrition, instead of shows that have no educational value. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you, guys. Mr. Gill, do you have a response?
I noticed that Caleb was looking at me the whole time he was talking about obese people. No, but I think that's a terrific idea.
I do, too.
He did, he did cut his eyes toward you once, Mr. Tack. Anyway, I think that's a terrific idea. I tell you what, if you guys would, maybe you could connect with Mr. Evans. James, let's look into pursuing something like that. That's a terrific idea.
Pass it on to Heather Corbin, I'm sure she'd love to incorporate it.
Absolutely. And we do have a school health coordinator here, who's really has a lot of energy, a lot of drive, and really passionate about exactly what you guys are talking about. So perhaps one day, beginning the next week or so, you guys can meet with us after school, and we can sit down and talk about it. Good job.
Would you like a copy of the...
Sure, absolutely. Yes.
I think, I think we'd all like it.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Calorie counter, is that what that is?
Well, it shows the balance between overweight and gaining weight and losing weight, and then there's some, how much, some different exercises that lose, have calories being lost, and then different foods that have calories and good calories and bad, too many calories, good calories.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Good job.
Grant, you can lose 170 calories if you jump on a trampoline for an hour, so that's...
I don't have a problem with weight, maybe lack of.
Let's see, I believe that's our only visitor. We do have five folks who are going through Leadership Rutherford, who are visiting with us here tonight, so welcome to you all. I guess we'll just wait on Miss, watch for Ms. Porter, and go to that when she runs. Let's go to number eight then.
Okay, financial matters. A budget amendment. This amendment budgets $36,987 in account 43990, other charges for services and related clerical and custodial pay and benefits for Homer Peter Campus School. MTSU is paying most of the cost of the clerical position and another custodial position at Homer Peter Campus School. They were MTSU positions last year. Second amendment. Increases account 46511, basic education program by $1,218,290, and decreases account 46512, BEP-ERA, by the same amount. State has reallocated its ERA funds that were used to fund part of the BEP. There's no impact on our total BEP funds. $199,912 is being added to account 47590, other federal through state materials and supplies for children whose families are eligible for free and reduced meals. Each year, the system receives an allocation that helps pay part of the cost of the system's high cost special education students. This amount must be budgeted in the general purpose school budget. This year's allocation is $60,081 more than is already budgeted. This amendment covers the revenue in accounts 47143, which is education of handicapped, IDEA, and 47145, special ed preschool grants and their special ed related expenditures. For our re-recitation, Mr. Oden, we were talking the other day, what's in our pre-reduced population, aren't we up to 41%?
41.
Yeah, okay. I think a few years, we've gradually shriveled up. I think a few years back, we were at 34, 35, so we're at 41. Maybe a sign of more kids applying, or just maybe because of unemployment. So recommend that you amend $1,218,290 to account 46511, basic education program from account 46512, BEP ERA, to amend $36,987 in account 43990, other charges for services for related clerical and custodial pay and benefits for Homer Peter Campus School, to amend $199,912 to account 47590, other federal through state for instructional materials and supplies, to amend $23,866 to account 47143, education of handicapped, IDEA, for special education related expenditures, and to amend $36,215 to account 47145, special ed preschool grants for special education related expenditures as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted.
B.
I don't think Ms. Porter's come in yet, has she?
I haven't seen her, no.
B, increase petty cash for Rutherford County Teacher Center and North Rutherford County Teacher Center. It is recommended that the petty cash, cash on hand, amounts to the Rutherford County Teacher Center be increased from $50 per secretary to $100 per secretary for a total petty cash, cash on hand, of $300. The Rutherford County Teacher Center and North Rutherford County Teacher Center secretary positions are designated as the petty cash custodians. The petty cash custodians will sign a receipt for petty cash funds received, and will agree to abide by the Rutherford County, Tennessee Guidelines for Petty Cash and Change Account. Petty cash must only be used to make change for the customer. No disbursements will be allowed from the account, and no personal checks will be cashed. Recommend that you approve petty cash, cash on hand, amounts to the Rutherford County Teacher Centers be increased from $50 per secretary to $100 per secretary for a total petty cash, cash on hand, of $300.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Number nine.
I'm gonna handle that. Allow him. Proposal for Rutherford County School Board Strategic Planning Meeting. I think a month or so ago, we talked about a strategic meeting where we discussed goals for the system, spent a day basically exchanging ideas, just trying to get better as a system. And we're recommending that you approve the proposal for School Board Strategic Planning Session by Dr. Patrick McCarthy, in the amount of $2,000. The tentative, I believe, targeted date is a Saturday in July, from 8:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. The tentative location is the MTSU Foundation House. We'll talk more later.
So moved. Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
We've had considerable discussion about this, but I'm certainly willing to entertain more, if you have it. As soon as we approve this, I'll get back, assuming we do. Don't want to count my chickens. I'll get with Mr. McCarthy, and we'll try to finalize the date. If anybody has a, I know Wayne's gonna be out of town one weekend in February for NSBA. If y'all have problems on Saturdays in February, if you'll let Ms. Michaels know, we'll do our best to work around them. We'll need a note, though, or some sort of written excuse to get out of this, get out of this event. Any questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Number 10.
We discussed, if we can have just a, if I can just make a comment before we make recommendations, so there's maybe a little better understanding of what we're, what this is about. We received money from the federal government, education something fund, I can't remember, but it, specifically what it was titled, but that money was dispersed, the state of Tennessee, and to various counties, to use for one of two or three things. One was to offer teacher bonuses. Secondly, set up a system of incentives for people that were producing high results, or perhaps worked in high poverty schools. Or thirdly, hiring teachers, of course, additional staff. And when you do that, you commit yourself to recurring funds, which, since there's so much uncertainty in our budget, and since we are one of the lower funded districts in the state, it was just not real sage on our part to do that. So I think we all agreed, first and foremost, that teachers deserve a bonus. They hadn't had, all our employees do. They hadn't really had anything in several years. Secondly, we'd like to give them more. And thirdly, they invest tremendous time and energy into their job, and anytime we get an opportunity to do something like this, I think it's just wonderful for us to be able to do that. And I appreciate the board being on board with us in that line of thinking. And our hope is, follow this 2% with additional percent in a bonus and a 1% pay increase next year, using these funds that are earmarked for that. And they're not to be used for anything else. As I said, you can't buy school buses with them, you can't buy, you can't add on to Eagleville School, you can't add on to another school, you can't do anything else with it other than what we're using it for. So I know there's the element of the public out there that doesn't think we ought to be giving bonuses during these times, but that's what that money's for, and that's what I think we should use it for. All that said, I'd recommend that you approve the reopening of the 2010-2011 REA agreement to negotiate a non-recurring 2% bonus, and to provide a non-recurring 2% classified bonus, contingent on approval of the revised 2010-2011 REA agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Eleven is our policy manual review. Does anybody have anything you want to raise at this time? Okay, next, either Monday or two, next week, one day, we have a policy committee meeting, so, Tuesday, so we'll have another opportunity there. Number 12.
We, I convened a committee to discuss basically some bus conduct, and some activity in the schools that was taking place, that was just warranted discussion, and warranted trying to find a way to better, better conduct. James, why don't you, if you don't mind, I think it's important enough to note specifically what we're doing, and in case anybody's watching tonight, that didn't watch the other night, plus the folks here, what it is we're trying to accomplish.
Sure. The committee has outlined several areas that we're gonna look at under Mr. Gill's direction. One is, you'll see next week at the policy committee, we want to look at making sexual battery and potentially related offenses, same category, to make it a zero tolerance offense. Part of that policy would also potentially include, if it happens on a bus, that they would be, or they would lose their bus privilege for the same time period, that same year. We are looking at bus monitors. We've had a lot of progress, actually, since Tuesday, and Mr. Gill told us to, he wanted the momentum to keep going. He didn't want us to let this drag behind. So we've had two meetings this morning about this very topic. A number of us met with some representatives of the SRO Division this morning, and they're already brainstorming with us about the policy change for one, and looking at different options for another figure to be on the bus. We're still in the early stages, but we're looking at it. We also had a meeting after that. Mr. Snell pulled some bus contractors in here, and we talked about their opinions on how we can better control buses, bus management. One thing that came out of that is that they're gonna look at redoing the Bus Code of Conduct, which is kind of the guideline that principals use for handing out discipline, you know, first fence, second fence, things like that. It hasn't been reviewed in a number of years, and everyone agrees that it's time for an update on that, and that they think that will help tremendously as well. They're gonna, actually gonna take it back to their, the Bus Drivers Association, to get some additional comments. We already have additional meetings scheduled for January, I believe it's January 11th. We're gonna follow with both of those groups to keep talking these things through, and looking for funding sources and things like that. Another important component of this is, is education in schools about this issue, because we all agree that it's, a large part of this is a societal thing. Kids have different attitudes today about sex. It's everywhere, it's on television shows they watch, they have access to phones to send pictures to each other, and, you know, we're seeing that raise across the board, everyone in the state is. So we want to have an education component to show them the consequences of their actions, you know, how serious it can be. No one wants to end up with this labeled on them for the rest of their lives. The SROs agreed, they thought that would be a good effort to lessen some of this, and they had some great ideas about the video that we wanted to put together, and they pretty much offered to help us put it together. So I'll entertain any questions. Mr. Gill, have I hit everything?
I think you did.
I have a question. On the zero tolerance, most of those are specified by state law, right? So we can just add one if we want to?
We have latitude to make it, to create a zero tolerance offense policy. Yeah.
The statute, you know, identifies three areas. We've added one before, vandalism, that's over $500, the board has added to that, to our local policy, so we can add. We want to be specific with the language, so that, you know, we know exactly when it should and should not be applied, and we think that that's something the policy committee will hopefully approve next week.
Questions from the board, or comments? Tim?
Wondered if you contacted other districts to see what, if any, especially this adding the bus zero tolerance, whether that is a common practice or being looked at in other places?
We haven't looked at the zero tolerance policy in other districts, but we have surveyed them on some of the strategies they use for student management on buses and in schools. A number of them do use a version of bus monitors, either security force type, where they move them around as they need them, or otherwise. And then Jeff and Mike are both looking into what other districts have done in that area, but we haven't known this actual zero tolerance policy.
Is it an option, if you, as you look at monitors, is it an option to do it on some buses, but not on all buses? I mean, you're not being discriminatory or anything like that.
Right. Mr. Snell thinks that we could probably identify the buses that are in the most need, and realistically, that's probably what we would have to do, is phase it in, or at least do a pilot program, because it would be a tremendous expense.
We also, Mr. Tack, discussed the availability of monitors, too, you know, who'd be willing to, you know, get up early in the morning for two hours ride with, you know, 70 kids on a bus and do the same thing in the afternoon. It may, in itself, whittle down the number of buses that got monitors, because I'm not sure you define, what, we got 200 buses, Mr. Snell? How many?
I'd venture to say you'd have to put a fairly significant monetary tag to that thing to make that happen.
Yeah.
Well, and the bus monitors, some of the bus monitors we have now, especially on buses, wouldn't be the best fit for this, because a lot of times you get retired teachers who may not be able to control the bus as well as they should be able to, if that makes sense.
Of course, as soon as we put monitors on some buses and not on others, the incident takes place on the bus where we don't have the monitor, and they say, why in the world didn't you have a monitor on that bus? You know, that's, and I understand the thinking, I mean, obviously, but we sort of encountered that with cameras. I mean, for a while, we had some buses with cameras and some without, and, you know, it's not an ideal situation.
We did some spitballing today, just on the price, or the salary that we pay for SROs to cover games, athletic events. They're typically paid $20 an hour, four hour minimum, and if you figure it out by 185 buses, because 35 of our buses already have monitors on them. Paula Barnes and I were just looking at numbers today. Without benefits or anything else, you're looking at a couple million dollars a year in recurring costs, so it's, and that's, that's lowballing it.
Yeah, it's a big hit. Aaron?
As you're looking at the curriculum to continue to educate and move in that direction, are the school counselors an appropriate resource to help out in that, and also community involvement from a parental committee?
Absolutely. We have the parent advisory council that we're already planning on using them to get some feedback from. We also have the option to, to survey all parents on this specific issue, if we choose to do that. Ms. Barnes has already talked about using her counselors as a resource. We've also talked to, about bringing in some counselors, some behavior specialists, to talk to bus drivers, to help train them better on how to deal with large groups of people, because they're trying to drive and monitor and manage a bus at the same time. So yes, we're hoping to incorporate that on several levels.
Also, on Tuesday night, you mentioned rolling into this potential changes in public displays of affection on campus, not just on the bus, and I wanted you to mention that as well.
Sure, and, you know, that's, that's obviously something that's preliminary at this point. We've got a lot of talking to do about it, but we are looking at introducing a policy at the schools that would be similar to the Driscoll policy, where we would basically ban any sort of public displays of affection. And the reason, the thinking behind that is, is that oftentimes, you know, it's consensual to a point, and then, you know, the girl wants to stop, and the boy doesn't want to, and then it crosses that line and becomes an assault. If we, you know, we're dealing with teenagers here primarily with a lot of hormones. If we can just end that kind of behavior at school altogether, and let them know that's not acceptable, we're hoping just to curtail that up front.
Donald, then I'll come back to you, Terry.
With the monitors on the special ed buses, all special ed buses have monitors, correct?
Correct.
That program has been in effect for some time.
Yes, sir.
So how are we consistently having the same people as monitors, or is it a constant turnover, or how has that program progressed over time?
It's a fairly stable group, as far as the monitors on the special ed buses.
And has it met the goals that were set for it? And that's 35 buses, correct?
I mean, especially 30. And we have a couple of different options for phasing in, you know, we can start out with a few on problem buses, or we could only do, if we had enough funding to do all buses, but maybe only do just on the afternoon rides. That's something we've discussed as well, because of the incidents we've had on buses, we couldn't think of any that have happened in the morning. They're typically on the ride home when kids are wound up and fully awake, you know, but again, that would still not save us too much money. That would still be a tremendous expense.
So when you were doing your calculating, did you use the amount that we're paying the monitors on the special ed buses?
We used the amount that we, and it was just Paula Barnes and I.
Yeah, I understand.
But we, we used the amount that we pay SROs to cover games, because we had talked to the SRO about potentially utilizing some officers who may want to get some additional pay aside. And again, that's just one idea of many, so not committing anyone to that.
Right. Terry?
I guess the question I had, the cameras we've got now, are they giving us full coverage on the buses?
Well, there's a section in the middle that's not as good as the front and rear, with regards to the fact that that's just the way the system's set up. There's three cameras on each bus, one looking down the stairwell, one looking back, and then one looking from the back looking front. Now, if it's right in the middle, sometimes have a block by the seats. Seat size is on, especially the new buses, have now risen to the point where bus driver hardly is able to see anybody, based upon the fact that the seats are, or protection of an accident. The things that we're trying to see, we've been able to see with camera, or needing to see.
Yeah, when we discussed it this morning, everyone was happy with the performance of the cameras, but they're not really, they're not much of a prevention. It's just helped us out on the investigative side of it, and we've been able to catch people or disprove something. Sometimes we've had some allegations, and the camera showed otherwise, so they've been tremendously helpful. But for whatever reason, you know, you would think that the students would be shy about being on camera. It's exactly the opposite. They're not, they're not shy, and that's another one of those cultural things that just, it's changing attitudes about sex.
Terry? Wayne?
I'm sorry.
No.
The monitors on the special ed buses, are they more for assistance or behavioral observation?
Typically, the principals still get out the discipline. The monitors are there to help with special ed students involved, if they have any special needs, or just to help with bus management in general. Am I wrong on that?
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I am a little bit skeptical of the cameras with the new buses, because the way the new buses are designed, there can be so much take place that cannot be seen, the seats are so high. When you talk about the bus driver can't see the kids in the seats, then the cameras are going to have the difficulty of doing that. And also with the, if students are planning on doing something that they know is against the rules, and then they're going to take advantage of that. So I see that, what I fear is that the cameras are going to become less effective, instead of solving our problem. I might be barking up the wrong tree.
Well, like Mike said, the front third of the bus and the back third of the bus, we get pretty, pretty good coverage now. It's that middle that's really the area that has the biggest blind spot, and it's not completely blind, but you're right, the seat backs do prevent us from seeing everything.
As that percentage of buses go up, that are of the newer model, more and more will be in that category with high seats.
We have three cameras on each bus. I mean, would it make sense to put a fourth camera, would that rectify the problem?
You could, but I, and I, and I want to address the argument. It could, but I, and I want to address it automatically.
Is there a mic you can use, Mike? Microphone, Mike? If people at home want to hear this.
In almost every situation that we've had reason to pull camera, we've been able to see what was going on. The majority, if you could move the back of the bus, put it up front, I mean, that's where it goes on, in the back of the bus. Or at least in the back quarter of the bus. So far, we've not had the issue, there's been some issues of trying to find out who cut a seat, things of that nature, that we can't see that was in the middle of the bus. But confrontations with a bus driver, that's very well, you can see that, that all takes place. The discussions that are going on between the bus driver and the students at the front of the bus, that's all taken care of. And then in the back, you pick up, because it has a microphone in the back, you can hear, you know, exactly what's being said. Even with the road noise, you hear that, and then you see it. But they don't really have a problem being on TV, you know. The ladies we had today, into the, Bicki Johnson, one of the contractors, it's like, they know it, and they say, "Are you going to watch us today?" I mean, they realize the camera's on. We've got a tape, I mean, a placard in front of the bus that says, "You're being under surveillance." They know it. It's just not part of the, they don't understand the consequences that's going to happen, evidently. I, I, yeah, we could put another camera, it'd be great, I wouldn't mind having another camera. It would pick up in the very middle, it would be nice. It's, when we were talking about putting them together, putting the package together, it was just another cost that we were trying to reduce and maintain, and still get what we needed. And I think we getting what we need.
Other questions for Mike or James, or? Well, we appreciate the work you're doing with this committee and look forward to hearing how things, I'm sorry, Don, go ahead.
With monitors on the bus, and with private contractors owning the bus, how has that worked with the special ed drivers? They work, the monitor works for the county, but does the contractor have any say on, about the person that's on the bus with them?
No. The special ed department does take into consideration issues with regards to where the bus is located, and there have been discussions between my department and the special ed with regards to some of the monitors that are on the bus, to, you know, try to eliminate, you know, you got some, you sometimes will have some, you know, different ideas between the two different people, and we've tried to work on and take care of those situations when we needed to. But it's not been a very big problem with regards to that. The biggest thing is, you know, where are we going to meet to pick you up?
And the three contractors this morning were very enthusiastic about the idea of having a second person, a second adult on the bus with them. So they didn't seem to have any objections with it.
I would think they would be.
Other questions or comments?
Are we boiling it down to this kind of question, then? You feel like we can catch the perpetrator after the fact? We're really looking at trying to prevent it from happening to start with. And see that it doesn't happen for the sake of the kids first, certainly for the sake of the system, because I mean, this is not, this is not good pub for us. But I mean, what I'm hearing you say, when bad things happen, we generally can run it down, but we're just, but the cameras are not going to, have not been much of a preventative measure for making sure it doesn't happen to start with.
Right. And the committee as a whole is not only looking at, I mean, buses are a big part of the discussion, but we're also looking at just the normal schools as well, anything that we can do, just, really just changing attitudes and trying to make sure they understand the consequences regardless of where they are on school grounds.
Grant?
What type of figures we're talking about on the budget? Your budget would allow this to, without any major adjustment?
Well, we haven't even gotten to that point. We're just looking at some of the ideas about what we might be able to do, that, we haven't gotten that far.
How many monitors will there actually be if you keep fully implemented, additional?
186 if we have one on the bus.
I think that, I think that leading with the curriculum emphasis and, you know, an education process to emphasize to the students at large, because it's not just the students that are on the buses that need this good information, this good advice about, you know, a proper decorum, and maybe some, you know, some eye-opening information about the consequences of their actions. Leading with that sounds like a policy that may find that the monitors aren't necessary. You know, if it were of particular impact, you know, we may see that we really benefit, and we'd have a greater good, you know, impacting not only those that ride the bus, but others as well. So I really like the curriculum emphasis and the input of the parent advisory committee, as well as those counselors.
And we're meeting next week to start actually going through the script of what would be on the video. We're trying to keep the video around three minutes, so that it's something that will keep their attention. We're also trying to make sure that it's geared towards their age level, so that, you know, it's hip. That's not the word they use anymore, I'm sure, but, you know, it is, so that it's just not a bunch of old people telling them what it should be.
Yeah, you're not going to be the one to decide what's hip, are you, John? And me neither, of course. Okay. Thank you all very much, we look forward to hearing more about this. Doesn't look like Ms. Porter is going to make it. Say, will you go ahead and make this award? Do you, Harry, do you know enough about this to make up the presentation, or?
I don't yet, but I suggest, were you guys prepared to talk about Sketch It Up Entrepreneurship too, anybody? I mean, why don't you tell us, tell us a little about it? If you don't, we're not going to give you this award.
All right, come on, someone step up, thank you.
Extra credit for this, right?
I think so, yeah. Welcome to say your name, yeah, thanks.
My name is Maddie Harte, and I was the manager for Sketch It Up last six weeks. Our current manager isn't here with us, but Sketch It Up is a student-run and established business that we made at Blackman High School. We do product services with our decal business. We have, we do posters, we do a whole bunch of creative projects for teachers and students alike. We designed the boards in the front of the teachers' rooms for their particular classes, for math classes and science classes. We have Veratronic cutout, decal cutouts that we can do for posters and for designs. Also, we have a cafe section where we sell coffee products directly to the students, which is very profitable. We work with student council to do different projects with them. We've been doing multiple things throughout the year.
Great. Anybody else want to speak? That didn't look very voluntary, but.
Hey, I'm Renee Marshall, and I'm Sketch It Up's accounting manager. We, Sketch It Up has recently joined the Chamber, Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce, so now we are members of them. Myself, and along with two other employees, we attend monthly meetings called the NUT, which is pretty much, we get together, all the businesses that are members of the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce, we get together and say about a one-minute presentation about our business, and how we can help the community, and how we can help the chamber, and involve each other's businesses. And we get a lot of outside businesses from them, such as Hobnob, Coup on Mint, and other businesses to do signs and stuff for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Vick, any of you guys want to say anything?
I'm looking for Ms. Stewart, who is the teacher, to tell you how Sketch It Up was created.
Okay.
This program came about because you guys gave us the budget money to buy the equipment, which we certainly appreciated, and from the creative efforts of the students sitting behind me. I didn't do it, they did. I threw the idea out there and said, "What do you think?" They took off running. The Chamber of Commerce was a sponsorship from The Avenue. They sponsored our membership for the first year, the kids will keep it going from now on. They have, they actively went into the school all summer long, building out the room, making sure everything was put together, designing their product line, deciding everything that needed to be done for the business. It came from a couple of 30-page business plans that were written in Entrepreneurship 1, that they extended the product line of both, and turned it into an entirely new entity. It's been marvelous, watching what they've done without my interference. And they tell me regularly when I'm interfering. They have no hesitation about that. But it's an incredible group of kids, and it's certainly a showcase as to what students can do when they're given the freedom and the opportunity to shine. Can I answer any questions?
Anybody have any questions about this program?
Just wondering if Sketch It Up could produce charts on obesity.
Absolutely.
There we go.
We have some terrific designers on staff.
Get the elementary committee to go with Sketch It Up.
It's a good idea. Now, we have a plaque here, Mr. Gill, is that?
We do, yes.
You want to step around and do the honors?
Actually, it's, first of all, it's a recognition by, yeah, TSB, Tennessee School Board Association, which we are certainly a member. And Dr. Burns, you need to step around here too, because we're presenting it actually to the board.
They don't get to take the plaque?
No, it's for you, for supporting us.
Here, how about stepping up here, Dr.?
Yeah.
Absolutely, come on up here. We submitted an affidavit to TSB. We recognize you guys good work. Well, I think I'm like with this big, a lot of new leadership. Somebody used the word creativity, you guys got a lot of creative programs, a lot of ingenuity comes out of that school. In particular, what's the program, I lost four, I mean, all the.
Virtual Empor.
Virtual Empor, fabulous program. But at any rate, this is from Tennessee School Board Association, 2010, a work for excellence and education program. Presented to other county schools, avoid, catch your recognition, Sketch It Up Entrepreneurship too. And Dr. Burns, School Board Chair, and people like you, School Board.
Thank you all very much for this. Okay, I think that brings us to.
Before they leave, I want to make, I want to make my comment before the students leave, because I know I'm going to sound very redundant, because it seems like each member, each meeting that I've had, and it's not been very many, I always want to stress how proud I am of what goes on in our schools. I know firsthand how much good goes on, and I do know that the order of what we do on the board typically has to work with the things that are troublesome, but we have so many things that are good. And students, congratulations to you, and Ms. Vick, and all of the good things that happened at Blackman. It's a school that I know you're proud of, and the students should be proud of. And we have so much good going on in schools, we see this at every board meeting, and it's just wonderful. And we talked about educating our kids about how they should act on the buses and forth. I think we need to make sure we educate our citizens of Rutherford County of just how good a kids we have in our schools.
Thank you all for coming. Okay, we're to general discussion. Not seeing any more journey.